Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming. We have a full house for our first meeting of the five-member board. Please join me to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, in this world where we're raising justice for all. Okay, like I said, this is the first meeting of our five-member board, select board. Lena and Brendan are joining us remotely. Lena's away. Brendan was just concerned about his home issues. We have Mike Goddard with us and obviously Mike Morley as well. Elena and Brendan are brand new to the board, and Mike has served select board before, so he's a good resource for us. So just wanted to welcome everybody, and our first order of business is to reorganize the select board to pick a chairman, as Mark Rios has stepped away and he was our chairman. So if anybody's got any input on that before we get moving, or any questions, especially Brendan and Elena, if you guys have any questions on the process or how it's usually done, please go ahead and ask, or if nothing.
I've got a question. How it's usually done gets really not applicable, right? This is a brand-new territory for us. When we had a three-person board, it was rotated in each person's term, one year after another, so that was pretty straightforward. So now we're entering a good phase, I think, and I don't think we have a process. How do we know about how we'd like to support, like, people dominating and selecting?
I mean, I think the process of the election is still the same. There's a nomination, someone seconded, and then the board will vote to approve it. As you mentioned, tradition was kind of the outgoing. Well, the person that was in the select board member that was in there last year would generally be nominated. This past couple of years were slightly different. You know, when I first got elected back on, it was only a one-year term. It was left on there. I didn't take the chairmanship only because I was the green. I got out for a few years and didn't figure that the other members probably were way more up to speed than I was, and it was a better transition that way. This past year, past two years, Mark Rios had it because going into with Christopher, he was not feeling well at the time, so we were unsure. So, you know, we nominated Mark to that, and Mark took it for his final year. I mean, without a doubt, it's our first go-around with the five-member board. You know, again, there's really no standard, except that it would have been my turn to issue that there was a term. I'm the most senior member, I guess, at the moment, and have served the longest in the selectment, however, it's up to the board to make a decision. So anybody's got any nominations?
So maybe I can ask the question differently, because I think your voice is... You know, I would say, anybody else? Elena, Brendan, either of you? It's a lot of fun to do in your first year, trust me.
I would take the chair. Who's nominated? I would also assent to anybody else being nominated.
I have another question, too, as far as, do we have, now that we have a five-member board, or is there a reason we never had a vice chair? For instance, now that even if it's a three-member board, I was saying to you about yesterday, why did we never have a vice chair? Was there a reason, or we just never did it? But especially with a five-member board, somebody, whoever does take the chairmanship, the vice chairmanship, but then that person can't be here. At least, everybody knows that that person's going to run the next meeting. I mean, there was meetings where Mark was like, I agree, who's going to chair that, right? It's always like, you can have a problem. Whereas if there's a vice chair, now we have that to play.
I would just add that if you are going to have a vice chair, it would be good to maybe pick one of the members that has a longer term, just so they could either remain in that position or be nominated up, right? Because it just would be better over the years, the second year. No, because it's not just you, because...
Right. And then the other question is, and I don't want to drag this up, again, should we even made these positions in the board with the bylaw change, five-year selection?
Well, that's the other thing.
And again, not just to be able to keep that location, but just for the ease of that, so that may be an discussion.
Well, assuming that, I mean, anyone could be in any of the votes, but I'm just saying, if we're going to rope one of them. In the nicest possible way, it might be, you know what I mean? Because they're going to be spending a lot of time learning the ropes anyway, right? So I'm just saying, there's an opportunity there. I mean, I obviously are perfectly capable of doing that.
I think vice chair makes sense. Did you do that?
Yes.
Well, let's do the chair first. All right. So we have two interested parties. And the motion is once the decision's made, so I'm not sure if we just want to...
We can make a motion, we can have discussion.
Well, I guess what I'm suggesting is put two people that are interested in a five-person issue. Yeah. Do you agree? That make sense to everybody? Good for them.
Secret ballot. Should we bring up electronic voting system, which is so great, actually?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I'll nominate myself. That's a possibility, so I nominate myself, and there's a second on that.
Just want to make sure, if there's a second there, does that mean you voted on it?
Yeah. I'll say that.
I'll nominate my second there.
Well, you can't get to vote on one. Yeah, that's two motions.
I'm just wondering, you just said, this five of us, we just say, vote, and then we nominate. Like, I would say this, all those in favor of, and Brendan and Elena not being here, are you comfortable raising your hand, if you will?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Yeah. All those in favor of Bonnie being chair? Wait a second. All those in favor of Mike being chair? Wait a second. I need to appoint Mike Morley as select board chair. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I would like to say, make another motion. I'd like to move to appoint Lonnie Tanyo, Vice Chair, to select board. Second.
Second.
All those, I see a discussion last time. I apologize. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
She says the state is in the official, she says the state is? All right, the next issue is corresponds to the board request for Netmark Football, August 13, 2022. Is it something you want to talk about that?
Michael Burnham, we're a parent volunteer. We work with students. There's a, we do a yearly fundraising, we're trying, looking for August 13. It's Tuesday from 9:00 to 12:00, 1:00. A lot of fun for students, the football players, children, everything out there. Hopefully, it's approved, and we have some.
Have you got any question? To approve the request of the Netmark Football, how many tribes be held on August 13, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the end of section of 16 and more?
Should be in second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Issue is lifesaving commendations, fire, police, bricks, and all. I see the fire chief is here remotely.
Fire via long guest?
Yeah, sorry for not being there in person. I'm actually on my way out to the Midwest, pulled over on the side, but it's, I'm really happy to be able to discuss this incident that happened in town, and it's an indication of the investment that the board in the town has made in public safety, both personnel and equipment. So if you just indulge me for a minute, I'm going to read a recap of the incident. At 1:36 a.m. on February 27, 2022, a regional dispatch center received a 911 call from an address in town reporting an unconscious male. On-duty fire personnel Lieutenant Paramedic Craig Burnham and firefighter paramedic Alex Drella, and on-duty police officers John Jack Coffey and Sean Malone were dispatched to the call. During this time, Metacomet Communications Supervisor Angelo Buerstadt was able to determine the patient was in cardiac arrest and began to coach the caller in providing CPR. Responding men and personnel were updated that it was a cardiac arrest, leading Lieutenant Burnham to request a company recall for additional assistance from on-call coverage personnel, bringing firefighter Phil Rich, firefighter EMT Arum Taft, and firefighter EMT Leonard Morganti to the scene. Treatment on scene led to what is called return of spontaneous circulation, meaning the patient's heart was now working and was no longer in cardiac arrest. Paramedics Burnham and Drella were able to determine the cardiac arrest was caused by a STEMI, which is a blocked heart artery, requiring transport to UMass Hospital in Worcester, which has an emergency catheterization lab. The patient went into cardiac arrest just as her crew entered the STEMI room, at which time another shock was delivered, bringing him back to a more normal rhythm. Care was then turned over to UMass personnel. We recently learned that the patient is doing well and back at home, preparing to enter a cardiac rehab program. The residents stopped by the station this past week to thank those who saved the patient's life. As a result of the lifesaving efforts performed by the public safety team, Police Chief David Cursey and I are proud to present the responders with lifesaver commendation bars. I'm not sure if Chief Cursey wanted to say anything, but I believe the residents were going to be there. The reason I didn't name them is because of HIPAA rules, which don't allow us to release any medical information, but I understand if they are present, they may want to speak as well.
Hello, I'm Carlos Monas, and this is Peter Monas, the patient.
Oh, he did, right?
I can't say enough. Chief Kessler did mention that I should, the letter I had given to him this last week, he said, some of them I should read it, so I don't get too nervous. So I'm going to do that. And so he sent this, this is my husband, Peter. We've been almost married for a few years. So thank God I can celebrate that anniversary, right?
Yes.
Thank you all. Our dear fire and police emergency management team, February 27, 2022, was a very dark night in our lives, when my husband, Peter, had a massive heart attack, fell to the floor, was non-responsive, as I called out, and did 911. Angelo, my dispatch responder, was on her game as she calmed me and walked me through CPR on my beloved husband of 50 years. Little do we know that that was the first miracle that would be ended then. It seemed like moments when, moments, when the mended response team came through our doors and jumped in to save my husband's life. Police Officer Jack Coffey, Officer Sean Malone, and other amazing Angelic Rescue Squad, our Craig, Alex, Phil, Lenny, and Arum focused, determined, and worked diligently to revive and stable Peter. Their quick action, medical expertise, professionalism, patient prep, communication with UMass, and decision to transfer Peter to UMass was the lifesaving response that got Peter in the right medical situation with the well-planned UMass Cardio Emergency Group team. Because of your actions, UMass team was expecting his arrival and saved his life. That day, in the days that followed, in the ICU, emergency stent procedure, pacemaker ICD, and more were precarious, to say the least. Through it all, the memory the memory of your grace and medical expertise gave me the hope to sustain me in my most prime time. I will never forget those valuable minutes of acute attentiveness to my husband and me. We are forever grateful for your angelic care, given. Because of you, I'm gifted for subsistence. Peter is home. He's here. He's recovering and looking forward to a complete recovery. Dr. Meyer, the head of cardiology at UMass Medical, from then it saw Peter and told us it was precarious, to say the least, and it was going to be his miracle. And he said medically that he was a miracle. The miracle started with you, all of you, and I thank you so much. We will be forever grateful for your quick response, the foresight to see how serious his medical position was, thank you. And preparing him for the next crucial steps in saving his life, making sure that I was secure in what I was faced. We are so appreciative to everyone who was involved directly and in the background and support, the person who put the equipment in the rescue that day, the person who brought things ready, the person who changed the schedule, the person who did whatever. It is really remarkable, and we appreciate it. We want to make sure that we thank you, because we want to also ensure that our rescue vehicle has always the up-to-date equipment and supplies to save people's lives, because look, we did it. We did it. It happened. So thank you very much. We have some traditions in our house. My father's passed on, and my father used to give out birthday kisses. COVID happened, and that tradition kind of stopped. But this all started again. So, and because of COVID and pubs, I would like to give the fire department who's going to be the one? I'm an artist. I taught art. I am daughter, and I have original drawings, kind of naked, and it's a tree of life. And in it, you will find many parts, and the tree of life says a lot. This tree of life looks like it has no life. It has no, it's in the fall, but you'll notice it's a few leaves are whole on it. So I present this to all of you, and if you look carefully, the horizon line has everybody's name in it, and so you can find little things in it. So that's this. And then we have all the dog. So Chief Cursey, you get kissed, but I shouldn't be kissing the fountain coffee, Sean.
He'll pass longer.
Thank you.
Please, you have kisses, and I've never come near you before, whether it's a bath or something, whatever. Little baby goes everywhere. It's the junior high, you know, in the house. But on behalf of us, always giving them a tree of life, thank you so much, your dedication, your phone, because we're going to see what happens.
Thank you.
And last but not least, who's Angelo? Is she here? I took it up with Angelo. Wait a minute, let me hear your voice again, come on. Oh, no, no, that was, can I help you with that? At the name of, then you were on your shame. Thank you for being here. Thank you. So share this, and it was Angelic that you were there, and we thank you, and whoever was behind, so we covered for you, because you spent a long time with me. I have to, and it was amazing for you. And you got me, so there's going to be stories, but we'll share later, and on behalf of Peter and I.
Angelo's looking at the camera. Does everything get all free?
Yeah. If you want us to drop the mask?
Whatever you want.
Don't breathe. I'll scream now. Destroying the whole media, we're down.
Do you want to pass these out to the, to the, these are the, these are the commendation bonus, so if you want to give it one grand, or a few grand?
Oh, we can forget to take care of everything. Oh, wait, do you say something? Oh, yeah.
Lieutenant, you're a good guy.
Firefighter paramedic Alex Drella?
Alex, yes. Thank you. That was incredible.
Firefighter EMT Leonard Bogatay?
Lenny.
Lenny.
I have to look at Lenny. Yes, we both appreciate it.
Firefighter EMT Arum Taft?
Quiet one. Oh, yes, my brother.
Paramedic Craig Burnham?
Isn't he a troublemaker?
Yes.
He's getting too much damage for trouble, I'm watching.
We didn't know. Jack Coffey?
Oh, there he is.
There he is.
Yeah, he kept saying to me, he said, you shouldn't want to call your sister. You should call your sister. Just follow the rescue.
You're my wife's a support.
You're proud of me, too.
Sir, last but not least, Officer Sean Malone.
Ah. Oh, I'm going to kiss face off. Standing on real. She's talking, we love this. Thank you. Big good lesson. And I think that's the goodies we have, it's such a great, thank you, everybody.
So I just really want to thank Gary and Mac. So when we embarked on this journey of regional dispatch, four years ago now, it was literally just on a conversation that she, Kessler, I had, the state had mentioned, hey, we'd like you to interview. He just said, hey, what would anything we talk about? This endeavor that we've won for the past four years, and work that the administrators put into it, Gary and his crew has put in, and Chief Kessler himself put into it. Everybody, when we first did this, said, oh, we're going to save a lot of money. We're saving $2 million. That really, that was never what it was about. It was always about providing a better service, and that's what Chief Kessler and I kept saying to the residents. And that's exactly what this has done. I mean, we're not always manned at the station, you know, at night, you don't get to see someone, they have to see a camera, but that's the downside. The plus side is this, it can save lives. Because if we had a dispatcher sitting there, that one dispatcher from Mendon, we don't know if Milvo would have had something going on, they might have to do a Milvo, they would have had to deal with the engines, the ambulance, the police officers, everybody else calling in, and that vital information that you got, you might not have gotten, we had a dispatch. And not because we were inept with the dispatcher there, we don't have the staffing that a regional dispatcher provides. And the MAC really, it's a, it's a show of what we've done in this town to move forward. 26 years here, Mike served on the police department before me. 26 years ago, I don't know if we'd be sitting here with a happy story. I mean, when I was a 20-year-old, it started out here. There were a lot of stories that just didn't add up this way, and this is a true, true testament to what the select boards through the past 26 years have put into public safety. They created an atmosphere in a public safety department that this town should be proud of, and it saves lives. Because I couldn't say that 26 years ago when I got here. It was, you'd be in the snow, trying to save someone, and hoping that part-time firefighter would get here, because we just didn't have the staff for it. It's completely different now, and I think it's a team effort, and that's really what shows here. And I'm glad to see these happy stories. This is something that we've had the past couple of years. This is what it's really about, and this is... I'm glad I can see it towards the end of my career. I can see as many towards the beginning, and I think there's more happy stories because of what you've invested in this public safety department. I think it's something the town should be proud of. Thank you.
Of course, you know, this is exactly what we would expect out of our policeman and fireman. The MAC, I've had a good opportunity to work with the MAC on the other side of things, technology, and everything that I've done with them has been great to be professionals to work with. They've really been there to help take, move things along forward, and to be able to see this come out of everything that was done is truly amazing. So glad you're here. Glad we're here to have these commendations given out. And great job done by all. Thank you guys so very much.
Great job.
Chief Cursey has written, fortunately, it isn't always a happy ending. And I can't say enough about all the public safety people in this town. And our commitment has always been to public safety, and I just want to extend our thanks to both Chief Kessler and Chief Cursey on all of the officers and all the firefighters. Thank you for your efforts. That was a great result.
And I'd just like to say that I've had some personal experiences with our public safety department. Chief Cursey, where are those? And I just hope you all know that you're very much appreciated by that town, by this work. I'm doing a great job.
Apologies, I can't be in there in person, but something like this, this happy story, is really why the people out there on the front lines are the heroes, and I know that word gets thrown around sometimes, but in this case, it's it's really applicable, and I'm really proud to be involved in this town, and I hope we can keep going, moving forward.
And I guess I'll add that I've always been very impressed by Mendon's public safety, and it was very moving to witness this presentation this evening, so I'm very glad I could be witness to it. So thank you all. So thank you all.
Thank you all very much. Housekeeping issues, future date. Okay, I know we have a meeting.
We don't. Our next meeting is the eighth.
Right, next.
The next select board meeting is the eighth.
So the question is, that working, now that we have five, does the eighth work for everybody?
Can, can we vote at night? Wednesday is the support. So I don't know, think about it, every night, that might be minimal for everybody. And if not.
So does, does Mondays work better for everybody? What's this?
Just gonna talk just for a second about why we moved to the date. Because we have to post, right? So, so when we have a meeting on a Monday, sometimes that means we're up against the timeline that could be Thursday or even Wednesday, based upon holidays, and stuff does come in over the weekends. We've been moving away from adding things under 48 hours where we can, so that we're fully transparent. So we moved to Wednesdays to hit that. So we basically have all day Monday to get all the stuff in that we could get in, so that we can not waste two weeks, basically. So Wednesday is, because fine, Thursday is fine, and we can go back to Monday and Tuesday. We're just gonna have to be really cognizant of getting whatever items in before, right? And then making sure we communicate to people that if it doesn't get in by that deadline, then it's two weeks out.
Brendan and Elena, are there any days that are, that don't work for you?
Tuesdays do not work for me, Thursdays are fine, Wednesdays are fine.
At, at this point, any evenings are fine for me.
See, what I'm trying, Thursdays, Thursday work for you? Let's start, we're gonna go for Monday, Monday or Thursday. Monday, if you're gonna Monday, and Brendan, can you do Monday?
I don't see any immediate issues with that, no, besides the ones that Kim mentioned.
And so you wanna do the eighth, or the third, do you wanna do the 13th, or do you wanna do the sixth?
Do you wanna keep, can you do one Wednesday and keep them on the schedule? Let's just leave, leave Wednesday.
Eighth. Okay.
Start with the 20th. Oh, yeah, yeah, just probably keep that. Second. In favor?